I'd like to go through, but before that, I'd certainly open it up to any questions.
Any questions this morning, Commissioner Ponstein?
Thank you, Chair Salfeld. Quickly, on the 21.9 percent that use the library for service, just say adults, is that broken down by age or any other demographics?
We have those demographics. Some of those, I think, are contained in the report, but we can certainly dig down into a lot of people levels to get that information. Residential surveys we send out were pretty extensive, about four pages of questions that we asked residents to respond to. And most of them are pretty thorough and enthusiastic about responding to surveys. And we do ask the demographic questions, so we've got a lot of that data that we can share for you. I came to be-
No, that's fine. You can-
But we've got that-
Email it to me if my service is working.
Yep.
Commissioner Stack?
Thank you, Chair. So as I understand it, about 5% of the county does not have access to this 25-
To the 25, yes.
Okay. Is the principal barrier to that just the cost to the providers to get there? Or are there other barriers or frustrations such as local zoning restrictions? Or what else is standing in the way?
Yeah, a lot of it really does come down to the business case to justify the providers' spending of the capital that they need to put in the right equipment, cabling and wiring in order to make that work. So that's why it's a little bit tougher generally in the more rural areas to do that, because you don't have the household density that you need to get enough subscribers to support those costs. There are some things, some federal programs to help encourage providers to go out into these more rural areas, give them some subsidies to lessen that cost to them. And we're starting to see some of that frontier in AT&amp;T, for example, are in the middle of a program to expand in more rural areas with the help of some funds from the federal government to do that. So that's one big piece of it. Technology's another area, too. Typically, people are trying to get the cable or fiber as their technology of choice, because it's faster and provides more bandwidth. But if you get into areas that are more heavily wooded, more rolling hills, you know, and the population is a little bit more spread or diverse, this fixed wireless technology can work in some cases where you just transmit from the towers, but you typically have to have a line of sight to the hole in order to make that work. So while it's less costly to put up a tower and put up some signals, you've got to have the right environment in order to make that work, too. So it's kind of a combination of cost and technology.
But generally, towers don't go up in those areas unless the local communities agree to put them up.
Yeah, right.
They're usually violated of zoning regs.
Yes, exactly right. So, yeah, those are often a point of discussion within the communities that everyone wants a tower. So part of our mission, too, is to help people at least understand the value that comes with having towers and what it can do for them in terms of bringing service. But then they have to weigh that against the other issues that they might be concerned with having a tower.
Very limited locations, but it'll work, right? You can't just put them anywhere.
You can't put them anywhere. You typically want it on one of the highest points in the area so that they have a better line of sight of home employees.
Excuse me, Vice Chair Boulter?
Thank you. So four of the 12 townships with service gaps are in my district.
I'm sorry to hear that.
So what needs to be done? I mean, what's the process? What needs to happen?
Yeah, and I've- I don't know if this is in your district or not, but I've already met with Kevin in Algoma Township. And we're talking a little bit about what we can do specifically. And a lot of that comes down to actually partnering with some of the local providers that are in the area and try to understand what their issues are. Often times what we'll find, it's not always just a matter of cost. But sometimes, if a provider wants to come into a township, or at least has the opportunity to come into a township, they may run into lots of regulations and ordinances that are standing in the way and make it difficult for them to engage and do business, and maybe too timely, too costly. And the last thing we want to do is discourage providers from coming into this area. So we spend a lot of time kind of looking at those kinds of issues, see if there's something to do to help with those. Or in a lot of cases, some townships have actually purchased their own towers and have to handle that, offset some of those costs.
So my area is the southeast corner, so bound Caledonia, Cascade. Anything I can do to facilitate those conversations or help? You know, I'd love to-
Well, I think it's more of the same met. It's funny that you say that. I got an email yesterday from a resident in Caledonia saying, "I can't get the service that I need. What can I do to help?" So we've really- my response to him was, "We need to sit down and talk to your individual providers and see if we can find some combination or partnership to help find a way to make that work."
I mean, I don't view Cascade as rural, so to me, whatever we can do-
Well, and that's the other thing, too. There are pockets up there. There are neighborhoods and subdivisions that are a little bit isolated for whatever reason. And part of the issue-
Okay.
We've written the table. Part of the value is making those areas known to the providers that are attending our meetings.
Right.
We share the results of this with the providers and let them know where all the holes are. So we're trying to bridge it, yeah.
Commissioner Mast?
Thank you, Chair. You know, just following up with your comment, I was going to ask you, I think with the expansion or the modernization of the 911, there is a tower or two being placed out in that area. Are you able to tie into that?
Well, I know for the longest time, there had been some restrictions on use of 911 towers for public use. There was law passed, I think, two years ago, that now opens up some of those public towers that can be used for mounting equipment. I don't know that the 911 towers are eligible for that quite yet because of privacy and homeland security issues, so.
Somebody taps them?
Pardon me?
Somebody taps into them, you mean?
That's the risk.
Really? It's only 911 use, okay.
Commissioner Womack?
Yes, today, in today's world, a lot of security systems, fire alarms, are based upon internet so it could give immediate contact to the police department or fire or first response teams. In your assessment, have you had a chance to discuss how those counties can be- those counties that don't have broadband and don't have these service providers, how they can be affected when it comes to emergency situations like that? Fire.
Good question. We do have a segment of our assessment that looks at public safety organizations and get some of their info. We didn't have a lot of participation, frankly, so far with public safety organizations in Kent County. However, there are- a lot of the public safety organizations kind of have their own networks in a lot of cases. Most of those are fiber controlled, so they're always active, very stable, and less risk of anything breaking down. So it kind of varies by- from county to county as to how those are.
But even for, like, homeowners and warehouses and things where there may not be man at night, and we may have some type of emergency situation, broadband can just trigger immediately to the police department or to the fire department if someone breaks in. It can trigger immediately if a fire breaks out, so we can have a quicker response. Would they be able to add that to the assessment to find out the need to those community and what the residents think about public safety?
Yeah, I think so. And it's all a function of having the right equipment in those buildings or facilities that allow that kind of function and the right kind of software to drive and manage all that absolutely.
Okay.
Time for a couple more questions. Commissioner Coleman?
Thank you, Chair. Full disclosure, I'm a happy resident of the light green. But the 25 megabits threshold, why was that picked as the target?
Good question. We work pretty closely with the Federal Communications Commission, the FCC, and they have, over the years, set a number of targets or guidelines of thresholds that they want to get the country to basically get everybody to an average speed. When we first started five years ago, that was set at about three megabits. About two years ago, they reached it up to 10. And the current target today that we're trying to get everybody to is 25.
Interesting.
And frankly, about the only technology right now that can deliver 25 on a consistent basis is either cable or fiber. Some of the tower providers can start to get close to that number, but it's really a function of the type of technology. But that's why it's a standard set.
Thank you.
Commissioner Skaggs?
You have to forgive some of my only vague knowledge on this issue, but I understand that there's some movement away from the traditional towers on, you know, on towers or on other high structures. Towards- if Google served me right, these are distributed antenna systems, the sorts of technology that's on telephone poles. I know that some of that has gone up in Plainfield, and there's been some issues in the county on it. So how does that fit into your goals? And where do you see that going?
That's a great point. And these distributed antenna systems are really kind of a newer technology that allows you to take a signal typically through mobile broadband. So if you're using an ATT smartphone, getting that service there, these distributed antenna systems are being put in large, a lot of downtown areas on top of telephone poles, like you mentioned, to help concentrate the signal and allow more users than typically you would have without those antennas. So if you go to a stadium and you're trying- everybody's trying to connect to the internet across the stadium, you'll see that your speed generally goes down or you've got trouble connecting. But if you have some of these distributed antenna systems that allows more users faster speeds in order to- so it's just a way of concentrating the signal to support more users.
So that's a technology that would work more in larger urban areas and wouldn't help get rid of some of these green areas?
Yeah, they're trying to stretch it out into more rural areas to see if they can make that work. But there are distance limitations, and it becomes a little bit more costly to keep more antennas to reach out to those areas.
Thanks. You?
You know, Commissioners, on a relative basis, we're in pretty good shape. I mean, in spite of all, if you looked around the other 12 counties within this region, we stack up at the top. And, you know, part of it is, is because we've got critical mass. I mean, we have people. And on a relative basis, we have wealth. And that attracts private sector service providers. And it's why the service providers were so important in this process, and they sat at the table with us. That doesn't happen as easy in some of the other counties, but it does here because we have those factors. Going forward, part of the improvement task is to continue to work with those service providers. You know, that's where the answers lie. I mean, we're not, you know, you're not going to see me come back here and sort of advocate county needs to put $10 million into broadband. I mean, we're pretty fortunate. The service providers are, in fact, spending millions of dollars to expand and improve their systems in this county. That's a good thing. Can it be better? You bet. And it needs, as we think, there's frankly some coordination with other public outlays that are occurring that need to occur between, I'll call it, you know, those agencies and departments that are responsible for public infrastructure and the coordination with what these private providers are doing. We think that's where the bulk of our work going forward is going to be. 96% needs to be 100%. 25 megabytes needs to be 50. We're going to work hard. We're going to continue to drive forward with the service providers for service enhancements. Like to come back, you know, five years from now and see nothing but pink up on that map, wouldn't that be nice? I know for some of you, as representatives of the people in your districts, this is a big deal. We understand that. It's a big deal for our businesses, too, trust me. It helps, again, to have and to build on the partnership that we've had with you as an example, as we did last year with Switch. That's a part and piece of this. That's a part of that infrastructure, again, that's going to put us at the top. In recognition that we're a pretty good community, Commissioner Salfeld, Chair Salfeld, if you could come down, I think we have a little bit of a presentation here, so.
I mentioned that we've got this certification program to recognize communities that are very well connected, have done the right job in terms of deploying resources and supporting the county in helping promote the expansion of broadband across the county as well. So on behalf of Michigan, Connected Nation, we'd like to recognize Kent County for becoming our 19th connected community across the state of Michigan. I believe it's also the 67th community across the country. And with that, we'd like to offer this recognition as well.
Let me say a few words. I appreciate this very much. First of all, I want to just really thank The Right Place for coordinating this, as well as the Broadband Committee, the local units of government, KDL, and all those who assisted with this project. This is a big deal, and it's a big part of economic development. It's a big part of what makes Kent County a great place to live. So thank you very much. I'll pass this around so nobody drops it and breaks it.
Make sure it gets to my talent. He likes this stuff.
All right. Moving on with our agenda, we are up to item six, which is public comment. If there's anybody that has a public comment this morning, please come forward, and you have three minutes to address the commission. I am seeing none, so we will move to the consent agenda, and I will call on Commissioner Wolkowski.
I will move the adoption of the consent agenda.
Support.
Support by Commissioner Jones. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Voorhees?
Thank you, Chair Salfeld. Just a comment, we're going to approve a couple more grants. And as we are facing the actions regarding the friend of the court and the Sheriff's Department, just that sometimes unintended consequences come with grants. There's usually, we call strings attached or requirements. And I'm just hopeful that we've had somebody research these good, that there is not some unintended consequence that's going to come down the road. So just a reminder of that thought. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? I see none, so I will- it is a roll call, so we'll call on the class.
Thank you. Commissioners Antor?
Yes.
Vice Chair Boulter?
Yes.
Bravy?
Yes.
Wolkowski?
Yes.
Hennessy?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Corndyke?
Yes.
Mast?
Yes.
Melton?
Morgan?
Yes.
Ponstein?
Yes.
Skaggs?
Yes.
Stec?
Yes.
Talan?
Yes.
Vonck?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Womack?
Yes.
Chair Salfeld?
Yes. Motion passes. Commissioner Skaggs, you want to send that around the other side, so the other half can take a look at it? Thank you. We move then to Agenda Item Number Eight, which are resolutions. And for the first one, I will call on Commissioner Mast.
Thank you, Chair. I move that resolution, which is a motion to approve and create a mental task force who's going to look at the need for a mental health court. And we have Andy Folhomer here, probably can speak to that a little bit. But I move that resolution.
Support.
Support by Commissioner Bravy. Any questions or comments on this? I see none. This is not a roll call vote, so all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We move to Agenda Item B, and again, I call on Commissioner Mast.
Thank you, Chair. These are both deal- the next two are both dealing with the My Community Dental Clinic. One is to approve a minor modification in the current agreement they have for the South Clinic. And I move that resolution.
Support.
Is there support?
Support.
Commissioner Bravy? Any questions or comments on this? Commissioner Bravy?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Adam London in our Health Department, too, for working with the dental centers. And on both of these items, there's just been a high use in the dental center in the south part of the county, and we've received a lot of positive feedback. And there's definitely a need for something like this in the northern part of the county. So I look forward to supporting this.
Commissioner Stack?
Thank you, Chair. I understand is that one of the issues addressed in this proposed amendment is to allow for private health insurance clients to be served. And I think I understand the rationale for that, but I'm not sure. Is there some strategy to cap or control or limit the extent to which the clinic provides services to the paying insurance covered client versus the target clients?
Good morning, Adam London from the Health Department. And I have with me this morning Kim Singh, who is from My Community Dental Centers, and she could talk a little bit about that.
Yes, sir. Is a strategy to cap the amount of commercial patients. And we also view this as continuity of care or a soft launch. There's not an active plan to recruit. The goal is, again, for maybe folks on Medicaid that actually land paying job with dental to keep those patients or to not turn individuals away. And a few of the commercial help us to grow and expand to areas like northern Kent as well. But there is a cap, and again, we view it as more of a soft launch and a continuity of care issue.
Is the cap a cap on the number of clients that the clinic will accept that are a for-pay client, or is it a number of dollars?
It would be as a percent of total patients. And again, that's at more of a corporate level than a center-by-center. I can let you know that this was first, again, we're up to 34 centers and working, again, on a center-by-center and a community-by-community basis to look at this. But in many areas, this started back in early 2016, and we haven't seen sweeping increase in numbers. So I think corporate, about 8% of total patients, which were 91,000, were private insurance.
Commissioner Mast?
Yes, and just kind of follow up with that question. I think during the Finance Committee discussion about this, we asked you about your mix of patients. And I think you were going to send us all, make sure all of us get a copy of what the current mix is, I think, the demographics. Could you speak to that just a little bit, in answer to this question? Because I think your majority are Medicaid, Medicaid adults, Medicaid children.
Yes, definitely. The majority, I wanted to say that about 82% of all of our patients are Medicaid, followed by about 10% uninsured. And I mentioned about 8%, 8 and 1/2% are traditional. But I did provide that to Adam, so we do have that and can supply it to all the Commissioners.
I think in answer to your question, Commissioner Stack.
Commissioner Voorhees?
Thank you, Chair Salfeld. My concern runs along the issue of service that's competing with the private sector. That's kind of, you get, is a quasi-governmental entity and they're getting some benefits that the private sector wouldn't get. We got that conflict of competition of the private sector with governmental entities. And my concern is in that arena as well. So I don't know if you can answer anything to that?
I can definitely understand the concern. I think when we look at people with a dental home, we have not found that people with a dental home that they're pleased with are going to jump around to different dentists. We really feel our mission and our core remains dedicated to Medicaid and low-income residents. And again, I mentioned, this does enable us to have- we also in the last year have implemented a sliding fee scale. And again, I provided the numbers. I want to say around, I'd have to look, if it was $34,000, it might have even been $54,000 was contributed to uncompensated care for the uninsured in Kent County. And again, this enables that little bit of a mix, enables us to grow and sustain centers in other parts of the county, again, focused on Medicaid and low income.
Can I just add to that, that in our surveying, we have seen that there is really a super abundance of people that are not seeing a dentist of any kind at all right now. In our presentations to the Kent County Oral Health Commission, which includes dentists, that concern has not been vocalized. And sadly, we have heard is that because these are individuals who aren't seeing dental care, that getting them involved, especially their children, involved in the habit of going to dentist is something that would be beneficial to every dentist as we get more people in the habit of seeing a dentist regularly.
And that also reminds me, we have a very close relationship with Spectrum in terms of referrals to the center, and that's emergency department referrals. Again, folks that are showing up at an emergency department needing dental care. And you'd be surprised that those are folks actually with commercial insurance that also don't have a dental home that are showing up. So that's another example of the type of patient that might end up at that South Clinic.
Any other questions? Round two.
Round two. Last round, right. Is a prevent- you provide preventive care, and is that Medicaid covered?
Yes, it is. Yes.
It is? Okay.
Okay. I see no more questions, so we'll vote on this. This is not roll call. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yea.
We- that motion passes. We now have Resolution Eight C, and again, I will call on Commissioner Mast.
Thank you, Chair. And this is going so well in the south part. There's a need in the north part, so this is a basic resolution approving their concept and to, I think, find a site, unless you've got a site there already, but to go ahead and put a clinic in the north side. So I move that resolution.
Support.
Support by Commissioner Bravy. Any questions or comments? I see none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We then move to Agenda Item Number Nine, which are to accept our 2017 legislative priorities. Let's first take a motion, and second, and then I'll ask Vice Chair Boulter to give us an update on this.
Motion.
Well, call on Commissioner Corndyke.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to move the adaption of this well-thought-out and very pretty legislative priorities for 2017.
Support.
Support by Commissioner Stack. Now, we will have Commissioner Boulter, Vice Chair Boulter, lead us through it and answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I first want to thank my committee for bearing with me on this journey. I think we did kind of a deep dive into all of our priorities for the year and tried to kind of change up instead of delivering legislators a 25-page packet of, you know, 50 different issues. We tried to focus on, and you'll see in the first page, the back of the first page, the priorities we're really hoping to actually accomplish this year. Three or four of them are dealing with budget issues. A couple of them are policy-related. But we wanted to also keep some items on the list in case there might be potential for movement later in the session. And also, I wanted to let everyone know, this isn't the end of the list. There are going to be issues that come up throughout the year that we need to add or subtract. But these are things that have come up, and they're important to the county, and we just want to make sure that they get done. So we also have our legislative breakfast on Monday with our legislators to go through this packet. We did send these to you a couple of times for input. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but excited to move them along.
I do appreciate the new format. I think it is easier to see the issues and the fact that it's kind of really zeroed in on the key priorities. So I do appreciate your work in preparing the document change.
I do want to make one point. Just because something isn't a priority doesn't mean it's not a priority. It means it's probably less likely to move, or just isn't the will in Lansing to do it, or the votes, or various factors. So for instance, the 911 surcharge transparency, obviously, that's a huge priority for us. And we kept it on the list because we want them to know it's a priority. But it's been an issue for years, and we just don't know that it's really, you know, going to- the chances of it getting done are probably small. So that's why it's not up on the- higher on the priority list.
Okay. I'll entertain questions. Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to make a comment that these priorities are our state legislative priorities. Having just returned from NACO, I now get to lose sleep over national legislative priorities, which I'm going to address when we hit miscellaneous. But I, you know, I just, when I read the document, I didn't see, you know, just as a side note, it doesn't say state. But now that I've become more aware that there's also national legislative priorities as well, I just think it's good to at least mention that this is the state legislative priorities. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Voorhees?
Thank you. I'm excited, as we're into March Madness, to see the Kent School Service Network, the Success Coaches Pathways. How I might learn a little more- Network, the Success Coaches Pathways. How I might learn a little more about that. And along with that is, just to encourage, we need more referees and people to act in that position. But is, what does a pathway success coach, is they qualified for that job or how's that all come about?
They don't have a whistle.
They don't?
They should, but they don't.
Basketball coach, football coach, or anything like that, Commissioner. But these are DHS workers, social workers who are placed in schools to support identifying community services programs to minimize fractured families that end up in the child welfare system.
Now I see the difference. With March Madness, I think of coaches right away. Okay, I see they're one who works in there coaching others or the students.
Kind of a proactive approach.
Thank you.
Prior to.
Thank you.
Commissioner Corndey?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to thank Commissioner Volter for her leadership and bring us through this report. We had a few meetings in regards to all these priorities. Had some lively discussion and Commissioner Volter did a very good job in keeping us focused and bringing up these topics. Thank you.
Excellent. Commissioner Skaggs?
Thank you, Chair. I want to echo Commissioner Corndey and thank Vice Chair Volter for leading what I thought was just a wonderful process. I think all the commissioners on the committee were able to, as Commissioner Corndey said, engage in a lively discussion. I think we came up with an excellent document. Maybe not everyone got everything that they wanted, but that's how it works out. And although it certainly is pretty, I think it's in a great format. And the setting the priorities and keeping it to a number that's reasonable that people can talk about in office visits, I can tell you as someone who's in Lansing, this is something that will be appreciated by representatives and their staff to have a clear set of when a meeting's over, what exactly the county is most interested in. So again, thanks to you so much, Vice Chair Volter.
Commissioner Towns?
Thank you, Chair. Also appreciate the effort and what we've ended up with here. And I'd like to, as I've often in the past, I think suggested, suggest that we make sure that we get regular reports from our lobbyists or perhaps staff on where are we at on these priorities. So I look forward to hearing those on a regular basis.
Commissioner Steck?
Thank you, Chair. So I'll just keep the kudos rolling here. Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, for the work and leadership doing this, through this and producing a wonderful product. It is, it's a great statement. I think the format is wonderful, except though that this is not the end of this process by any means. These are marching orders. And this is just the beginning of what it calls to be a lot of work and effort on the part of all of us going forward to make these real.
Okay. Anyone else? I see none. So this is not a roll call vote. All in favor of accepting these 2017 legislative priorities, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you again to Commissioner Volter and your team. Excellent report. We move to public comment, Agenda Item Number 10. This is round two. Are there any public comment today? I see none. So we move to reports, Item 11. Are there any reports?
Yes, thank you, Chair. This is not as much as a report, as a heads up for those members of the DPW board. I've called a special meeting for Tuesday. We'll have that at 7:30 because I think there's a conflict with other meetings following the legislative meeting. But we have a compactor failure going on at the recycle plant and that's getting more news than this board gets from time to time. So we've got to make a decision concerning that compactor. I'll have Darbas send out a report on that. And then once you receive the report, if you have any questions, why don't you call him Monday afternoon. That gives him time to work on your questions as well as answer them officially. So just a heads up on that issue. And that special meeting Tuesday morning at 7:30. Thank you.
Commissioner Wolkowski?
Real quick, the Front of the Court Advisory Committee continues to work. Thank Commissioners Voorhees and Corndey and the committee members that we spent two hours at the DHHS building hearing testimony on Monday night. There are some questions and stuff that we'll be reviewing today. So a lot of good work happening. So look forward to more detailed reports to come.
Commissioner Talon?
Thank you, Chair. The Grand Rapids DDA met yesterday. I'd like to take you on a few items from that agenda. We extended the agreement for the downtown ambassadors. I hope some of you have experienced that hospitality when you've been downtown. We authorized some collaborative funding for River Trail improvements. The city of Grand Rapids is working on raising its floodwalls. They're trying to do that in a much more people-friendly way. And part of that work is going to begin in the Anabouwin Park area near Pearl Street. And you'll see some significant work going on there pretty soon to raise that floodwall level. But to also, it'll include places to fish along the river, all sorts of improvements for access. Something that the city and the DDA did that we've done often here at Kent County is to refund some bonds and that provided some additional revenue. And part of that was spent on those River Trail improvements. So yeah, good stuff happening there. Some of you may have read about a project for affordable housing on Division, right near the Civic Theater, the Keeler Building. Part of the funding for that is what's called a pilot, where the taxes are taken off the normal collection rule, the ad valorem, and an agreement is made to collect them, a portion of them. So they are, the DDA would not collect any of the increment on that type of project. It's a very interesting project. It's a new developer in town. I'm not sure what the potential is for that project to go through, but it's a building that I think we all see as we drive down Division downtown. It's got that fence around it. It's been abandoned for a long time. So that's an important project to happen. And then finally, long in the planning, it looks like this summer, the Veterans Park is going to be renovated. And that's a really cool project that's really going to change how that park is set up, make it much more inviting, much more usable for people to go there to recognize the various wars that our veterans have been involved in. And that, the DDA is helping to fund that. And that construction will happen this summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Volter?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to remind everyone, Land Bank is getting postponed until April. We have decided to look into the foreclosure numbers for this year, which come out actually April 3rd. So we're going to wait until we have the full data before we continue to deliberate on this. So I just want to remind everyone that meeting has been postponed. Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Breevy?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to remind everyone about the LED Task Force. We're meeting again next week, Wednesday, 1 o'clock in this room. And we'll be hearing from some environmental experts on water.
Excellent. Commissioner Steck?
Thank you, Chair. Briefly, the representatives from DHHS met with the LRE, which is the Region 3 PIHP, for most of the day on Tuesday and did a review and evaluation of the performance of the LRE after the plan of correction issued last year. Report will be coming out soon, we're told. All of the indications were extremely positive, very affirming, suggesting that whatever it is that they were concerned about has been cured and ends up. So positive report.
Very good. Any other reports? I see none. So we will move to Agenda Item Number 12. And we will call on Commissioners for any miscellaneous. Commissioner Jones, wasn't that you standing next to President Trump?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I have a few items for miscellaneous. The first one is if anyone received a phone call that there was a woman who looked just like Diane Jones on Fox News. The answer is yes, I was that Diane Jones on Fox News.
There's going to be no living with her now.
Was standing right there.
You don't have to.
No, it was quite an honor. There were over 2,000 commissioners at the conference and they selected 12 to go to the White House, which was my first White House visit ever, which was quite an honor on top of it, being my first NACO conference. So it was quite a learning experience across the board. And now I know what like a deer in the headlights feels like when you have that moment because there he is and, you know, there's the podium and then, you know, I'm short, so I always stand in front. Otherwise, I can't see, right? And I didn't quite grasp where that position was until after, how I would be right there. But it was quite an honor and I'm really pleased that Kent County was selected, given the fact that they only had 12 representatives go to the White House for the signing of this executive order on the effective definition of waters of the U.S. So that was very helpful. And then when it came to the legislative priorities, now I feel like, a little bit like Commissioner Ponstein, who I now added more items to help me lose sleep, including being concerned about protecting our municipal bonds and preserving the tax exempt status of those and protecting the federal, state, and local partnership for Medicaid. Because there's been conversations that that change could happen, which are very significant changes. So I actually have the document on the legislative priorities, which I will give to our Chair of the Legislative Committee, Commissioner Volter, to have and review, along with an additional policy brief on a few of the topics I just mentioned. And then I had one more quick piece on Parks Matter, which is Kent County Parks Foundation has their annual Parks Matter Breakfast on April 19th. So I wanted to invite all the other commissioners to join me in considering hosting a table. There is no cost to attend. There will be an ask. Doesn't mean you have to give anything or your guests have to give anything. But it is April 19th and the Grand Rapids Dirt Dogs will be the special guest. If you don't know who they are, it's a darling little group of kids who do mountain biking out at Luton Park. And if you are interested, just touch base with me on the details. It's early in the morning and Kate Meyer would be more than happy to touch base with you too on that. But just, I'll be mentioning this again, but if you could, just think about inviting your constituents or other legislative leaders you're connected with. I think it's a great opportunity to take those who you know who are connected with the parks in your community and take it one level up to have them learn about things that are going on with our local parks. Thank you.
What time was that again?
The breakfast, I believe, starts at 7:30.
7:30, okay. All right. Commissioner Ponstein?
Thank you, Chair Salfeld. I'm not going to get in all, because my committee met for probably about seven hours. So I'm going to give a more detailed report at the Legislative Committee. But yes, I did want to highlight Commissioner Jones on her television appearance. I think more importantly is what President Trump signed and that was the Waters of the U.S. I know the committee I've sat on has been tackling this issue for three years. And I just want to clarify the point that somehow the immediate response was is Trump is anti-clean water. And obviously, that's furthest from the truth. The problem NACO had with Waters of the USA is how it was implemented, the amount of time and input that counties got into making some of these decisions. So it's by no way a stance that NACO is against clean water. That's the furthest thing from the truth. I also want to highlight the municipal bond issue. That's still out there. And what I find is kind of interesting is that if you look at the legislative stuff that needs to get done before that decision for the infrastructure that they've been talking about, a trillion-dollar plan to get us up and running. If that municipal bond, the first step before that would be tax reform. If municipal bonds are being taken out, that's going to cost counties and cities and local units over the next 10 years about a trillion dollars. Now, does it make sense that we spend more on infrastructure, but that on the front end, it's going to cost more for counties and cities to do these projects? So it is important. The stuff I've been told by the lobbyists that represents our committee was that a lot of the representatives are saying they're hearing nothing about this. So it's not even on their radar. So I know there's a list out where you can ask your legislator to join the support of preserving that. But it's on, you know, it's still on the radar and it hasn't gone away. And I just wanted to echo that. And then one other thing, you know, with the dental report, I know Commissioner Voorhees is always, you know, that fine line of public and private. And I appreciate that. The private sector in this community does a lot. But when we listen to the DDA report, where we're now taking tax dollars in increments and feeding them to businesses to do good things, that's good too. And I think the nice thing about Kent County is that, you know, we know where that line is, but we also realize that the public sector, us, can work cooperatively with the private sector to do great things. And it's not all or take none. And the ball swings both ways. I mean, as many times as people can cite that the public is interfering with the private sector, I could say, well, you know, the other way it's true where the public sector is funneling money into the private sector for development. That's all good. That's what makes Kent County great. And I appreciate the work of the staff, people in the community that have done that over the years, that we can work together and we do work together. And I think it's reflective in every report we have at every meeting.
Great. Vice Chair Volter?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Two quick things. I want to first acknowledge Jerry Miller again for what a great presentation. He is my constituent. So thank you again for being here. I also want to acknowledge kind of a shared thing with Commissioner Jones, our Lowell red arrows and the awesome athletic ability of that school. And I know our clerk is right there with me. The Lowell, Caladonia hockey team is in regional finals. Their bowling team just won the state finals. And their wrestling team just won the state title for the fourth year in a row. And their average GPA for that team is 3.9. So, pretty awesome. And so I'm proud of them.
Very good. Do you have an introduction to make as well?
Oh, of course. And my intern for the day, Hudson Volter, is in the back of the room, waiting patiently for us to adjourn.
Very good. Commissioner Wolkowski?
Oh, sorry. Laugh Fest starts today. If you're not aware, 5 o'clock, Rosa Parks Circle. Come on down for that. Disability Advocates is involved on the 16th, co-hosting with this art comedian with Tourette's. Can't be nothing but fun. And then the next night is the funny and real side of Life with a Disability at the Art Museum. Unfortunately, Commissioner Ponstein, I won't be speaking at any of these events. However, if you want to hear Wolkowski speak in public, not to take Commissioner Skaggs' thunder, but Liam Wolkowski, my youngest, will be speaking Saturday night at TEDx East Grand Rapids. So he's a Grand Rapids City High student, Saturday night, 7:00 PM, East Grand Rapids High School, Liam Wolkowski. So I don't know where he gets it from.
His mother holds.
His mother.
He does get it from his mom.
His brains too.
Very good. Commissioner Steck?
Thank you, Chair. Hard to follow up on that. So I was honored this past Monday to be able to present to State Representative Perhuan the Michigan Association Community Mental Health Board's Go to Bat Award for his incredible work on behalf of the mental health system in the state of Michigan. As most of you know, he was very instrumental in a lot of the work in pursuing a response to the original Section 298 language in the budget last year and continues to work tirelessly on behalf of the system to be able to push us to better improve and enhance the services. So it was a great award for him and well-deserved.
Very good. Administrator Darrell Delavio?
I want to thank, I do want to thank Mandy, Commissioner Volter, for her idea related to the legislative priorities because it was her idea to change the format. And she made suggestions throughout, including the summary. I do want to thank staff for putting everything together so that we could do this. It included Mary Swanson, Wayman Britt, Tom Dempsey, Matthew Van Zetten, Steve Duarte, and Lisa LaPlant was the architect of the new format that you see. So just wanted to acknowledge staff on that excellent work.
Very good. Assistant Administrator Mary Swanson, I believe, has an introduction.
Good morning, Commissioners. You've seen a new face at your meetings recently and I just wanted to formally introduce Elliot Nelson, who joined our office earlier this month as our new management analyst. His last stint was in Champaign-Urbana, where he was an assistant city manager. He's a Grand Traverse native, came back here to West Michigan because this He's a Grand Traverse native, came back here to West Michigan because this was a prosperous area where he wanted to set his roots down. Big Cubs fan, and he would want me to tell you that he's also a CMU grad and Go Chips.
Welcome. Couldn't get in the Grand Valley, obviously.
Bird.
Any other announcements or miscellaneouss? I have only one announcement, and that is the following. Next meeting, March 23rd, happens to be my birthday, and it's the big 5-0, so I will not be here.
I guess we're.
And the meeting after that is on April 13th, and that happens to be the date of our annual get-together with the bond rating agencies in New York City. Myself, Darrell, Steve, Ken Parrish will all be at that meeting. I've actually asked Darrell to take a look and see if we can't maybe consolidate the business into the March meeting and then not hold the April meeting, since that is coming off the heels of our spring break period as well. So, stay tuned on that. I have nothing else, so we'll move to Agenda Item Number 13, and I will call on Commissioner Bukowski.
I move to adjourn until the chair brings us back for Thursday, the 23rd.
Support.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Adjourn.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole, and I think that's wonderful, and you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued, to protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who's interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base, and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years, and I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our County Administrator Controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong, solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind-the-scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today, and I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials, impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level, as well as the Board of Commissioners, and they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community, and vice versa. We couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, Administrator Controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives, so we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County, it's life well-run.